Okay, let's get started and we don't have a quorum yet, but we're gonna go right to the new business. And please have Ken Smith with us this morning. And Ken's gonna give us kind of an overview on where agriculture stands in the county. We appreciate your coming, Ken.
Okay, um, okay, glad to do it. Can you hear me okay?
Ken.
Okay, well, I think my main goal in this was to make this as painless as possible for the people who've sat in committee meetings with me for the past 10 years and have heard most of what I've had to say many times over, but I think I did a kind of a recap with this through the census is going back to 1850 this morning. And it's really, you know, very helpful to kind of look and see how the county agriculture changes and how rapidly it changes over time and how it it's been kind of a very steady change and kind of a predictable route. And so just to kind of just, you know, if you look at the past, it makes it very easy to kind of see into the future, in my opinion. So, you know, so you have early on, these really rapid changes where after settlement, almost immediately, the forests are are just removed from just about every place in the county that's not a steep, steep, high forested hilltop. And and there are just not a lot of forests left. About seventy-five percent of the county is is deforested, and that's because we're really looking at a county that is is covered with livestock. So in 1850, you look at the census and it's just incredible, the number of animals. So there's eighty-eight thousand sheep, thirty thousand milk cows. I didn't keep track of the heifers and bullocks, but you know, almost nine thousand horses, five thousand working oxen. So that's kind of that's kind of the the thing that set our landscape with all these open fields across the hilltops that that we we see now that are growing back to forest, that have grown back to forest. You know, this this eight legacy of these massive numbers of horses, sheep and cattle around eighteen fifty. And so the the lands that we see in places like Farsalia or Coventry or high elevation sites that are cleared, they they were cleared for sheep and cattle and horses at the middle of the last century. And since then, there's been very rapid changes away from from that condition. So again, just to the next point, all of this farming from eighteen fifty on, let's call it, is based on very cool weather, lot of homesteads, crops that do well in cool weather, crops like potatoes, barley, buckwheat was a very big crop, oats, things to do well in cool wet soils. Peak of sheep farming in Shenango County is in eighteen fifty or so, and it's just incredible to see. We think about dairy and how it's fallen off. And look at how the sheep farming fell off, you know, eighty-eight thousand animals in eighteen fifty, half of that, ten years later in eighteen sixty. And then, oh, you know, what, two percent of that, five point two, two-five percent of it in twenty years later in eighteen seventy. So the way we worry about dairy now, I'm sure they were worried about sheep farming and the loss of sheep farming in eighteen eighteen, late eighteen hundreds. The same time that that's happening, you have this very rapid boom in butter and cheese production on the farm. And then that dies away by the early part of the nineteen twenties. And we move right into this liquid milk market that has dominated our agriculture for the past hundred years. So we had this, so we can go on to the next slide. I don't know if and I can, yeah, there we go. So again, you know, you have this rapid change first in in the kinds of animals that were there and then in the products. And we think of it as being milk, but first it was cheese and butter produced on the farm. Then cheese moved off the farm and into the factory and same same with the butter moved off of the farm. We have this huge number of farms in the county around nineteen ten, which is just the the number, the year I happened to lodge on for the early part of the twentieth century. There's four thousand farms in Shenango County. Now we're down to seven hundred. Power sources transitioning the entire time. You can see a quickly change from oxen then through the Industrial Revolution into horses. Then around First World War into from horses into tractors. So again, you know, it's not like the past was steady. The past was a very rapid change, just like we see today. Field crops are changing from like from oats to buckwheat and potatoes as big crops again, but to other really what are frankly still cool season crops, moderate season crops, corn, alfalfa, soybeans. So these these are crop transitions. We're still probably, you know, as they would say, looking. But it it's not like our crops were steady or our livestock were steady, but what has been steady for the past hundred years or so has been mostly that liquid milk market that has made up our our sales. So again, in the past ten years, we've seen it where it's rapidly changed and we've added this yogurt component. But even though that seems like a big change, it's pretty consistent with changing markets. We can go ahead to the next slide. So so we have, we have a hundred years, hundred and fifty years of data, hundred and seventy years of data points, so going on two hundred. And the trends have been really consistent. And so, you know, we're we're not gonna probably see trends that are a hundred or almost two hundred years long now change. You know, we can, we can just take those lines and extrapolate a little bit. And so you know, what we can see around us is that we are gonna have agriculture that is based on cool weather, wet environment crops. And that we're gonna see, you know, markets build up around what we can do competitively and because that's what has always been the case. We have always been able to compete for cool weather, moist crop items. And that has been for the past hundred years been dairy. Now what we see in dairy is that what we can do competitively, and I can't put my cursor on this, it's not my screen, so I you won't see my cursor, but you know, the cursor could go over to that cool dairy Maple Hill. Maple Hill Creamery is a local creamery that 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 purchases a lot of milk from smaller farms in Shenango County. These farms are small grass-fed farms, not any great difference between what they're doing in agriculture, not so much in techniques, but in in outcome. They're producing milk by grazing cattle and using grass, you know, hay products, which has been happening here for two hundred years. But this is a place where we can compete, and this is a place where we have grown a lot. And as long as there's a market for grass-fed milk, we will be doing very well because there's not a lot of places around the country that can produce it. Hay is another part of the the equation. So if you look back in this ag census for back to eighteen fifty or eighteen seventy or nineteen twenty, you'll see a hay is a major crop for Shenango County. Again, because we have moisture, we have the open land and we can produce hay. And so hay will be, you know, is a significant crop for people producing hay for horses and livestock and other forages. Simply on grass-based forested forages, that'll be part of our future. I've got a grass-fed wagyu strip steak, so grass-based meat production, that might be beef. It could also evolve into sheep and perhaps goats. We also have, you know, we've gone from twenty-five percent forested in eighteen fifty to seventy percent or so forested and and now we're gonna see more forest-based products like maple and the maple production in the county has grown dramatically in the past five or 10 years, as people have heard me say. And so that'll be another crop, you know, and so I'm just gonna, I'm trying to get my own getaway exit full screen for me. And then so I'm, you know, when we look at these hundred-year-long trends, a hundred and fifty, you know, we're just, I think we can safely say that they're going to continue most of them. So we'll see our upland fields reverting to forests. Hopefully, we can get that forest production, that sequesters a lot of carbon, maybe we can get farmers paid for that. We're gonna see fewer dairy animals, but they're gonna be more productive animals. We will continue to see grass-based agriculture. We'll probably see more organic agriculture because it emphasizes grass-based. We'll probably see more forest-based agriculture for things like maple and possibly mushrooms. But anything that comes out of the forest, obviously, we're gonna do better because we have more forested landscape now. Aquaculture is something that is kind, there's a few things that we don't, that aren't on our radar necessarily. Aquaculture is one that we do pretty well at, and that could expand. Also, what we see happening is aggregation of production here in Shenango County where we have farms like Norwich Meadows Farms and Sova Farms where we're producing crops here, then we're aggregating and then sending them directly to New York City and surrounding areas. So we'll probably see more of that. But anyway, you know, I kind of blasted through that, but usually quick and efficient is how people appreciate it. So any questions on any of that as I kind of give you guys the fast, fast-forward version of it?
I guess I have just a couple of comments. One is forestry. I look at the woodlots around here, and so many of them are horribly mismanaged, which leaves a landowner, you know, that they leave tens of thousands of dollars on the table after a period of thirty or forty years. And, you know, forest crops right now, the hardwood lumber, on average, it's up twenty, twenty-five percent since January. It's kind of a cool market for us because most of that gets exported. A lot of it right now is going to Vietnam. And I just wonder how we encourage people to do, you know, a better job of of managing that 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 asset. As I say, I mean, I'm in the woods a lot. It really troubles me. I looked at a cherry tree the other day that's worth over twelve hundred dollars on my property. For a single tree.
What? So when you said that, how did, well, how did that, how did that twelve hundred dollars? Was that harvested, Steve, or is that an estimate? How how did that work out? How did that work?
You use a Billmore stick, you go in, you measure diameter and take diameter and breast height, take the length, the the height of the tree to the
Okay.
the first defect or the first branch. But my forest has been managed with professional oversight since nineteen eighty-five, I guess.
Right.
Right? And it's kind of interesting to look at a at a harvest like that. I can take five or six similar trees off of one or two acre parcel. And at this point, after that many years of management, ten years down the road, we'll do the same thing. Because now there's stems beside that that are, you know, twenty inches in diameter. And it's just a comment, right? I mean, I've ridden horseback across most of this county and a lot of Madison County also. It's just right. I look at these privately held forests and even a lot of the state land, they're just, they they just don't, they're just not managed well.
Well, I think that that's, it's an interesting opportunity, but I think that that's, I think just part of the conversation. Now you're looking at a county that is, you know, in in our lifetimes, transitioned from more than fifty percent ag land now to significantly, you know, like maybe seventy, you know, officially, it's like high sixties, but you know, functionally, it's a little bit more on the forest side, but it's it's a real opportunity. We've tried to work a little bit with it. The extension will probably be working more with it because we've written grants to try and help farmers take advantage of their forest lands more. What we find is that for farmers that they're so occupied with running a farm that they're just not interested in transitioning to something that consumes their time. So in terms of managing those opportunities, I think the way that it will work best based on like the the grants that we've had is that farmers are very interested. If someone wants to come in and tap their trees and give them a per-tap lease or if they want to sell stumpage, they they are willing to, you know, take that check. But in order to to make it be not wasteful, as you would say, so that you know, forests are being managed for the best return on their potential. You know, I think that's something that maybe we need to look at, you know, in extension and maybe as a county, it's like, okay, well, how do we help landowners take those hundreds of thousands of acres in Shenango County and manage them so that more income is coming back, so that it's a bigger part of the Shenango County economy, because I think that's a big opportunity. And figuring out how to do it is maybe, maybe certainly is an important task for us as trying to help dairy farmers and other farmers maximize their their opportunities.
Yeah, it's not an immediate return, right? It takes years.
Well, sometimes it isn't immediate return.
Right.
Right?
Over time, I mean, the studies on hardwood hardwood forests show a return of seven percent to ten percent a year. I, you know, you have a hard time getting that in the financial markets today without a lot of work.
Right. In fact, there are certain parts of forests that that have even dramatically more return than that. So that's, that's an interesting conversation to have. You know, and I know not to take up more time, but we'll probably be writing a series of grants to help farmers and other landowners get better return on their their forest lands. Sometimes those returns are twenty percent, Steve, when you have young, young forest, young forest land transitioning into mature commercial crops, and we have a lot of that in the county.
Ken, how many dairy farms we have now? And I know you should be projecting fewer farms. That seems to be the trend.
Oh, right, right now, you know, we probably have somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty dairy farms compared, you know, and we can compare that to maybe over two hundred ten or fifteen years ago. And so that represents a pretty significant loss in in income. So when you look at the dollar impact of that, it's in the tens of millions of dollars a year for the county over the past ten years or so. So you see a lot of loss of vigor in rural communities as a result of the loss of dairy farms. We'll probably see that continue, but you know, we're not gonna see dairy go out of the county. You still have dairy representing probably eighty percent of the income for dairy farming in the region.
Other questions for Ken before we move on? Thank you, sir. We appreciate.
Okay, well, thanks. Thanks to all of you. Thanks for for the time. Appreciate your patience. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken. We added a person or two. We have to form.
Uh, no, we still lack one person.
So why don't we move on to hazard mitigation?
So for the hazard mitigation plan, we did add Oxford recently. There are a few municipalities who are still lacking their complete annex, and it's mainly because of their projects. I believe it's the Town and Village of Afton, Town of Green, Town of McDonough, Village of Smyrna. And I so maybe Town of Sherburne, but it's pretty close to almost being complete. We're gonna be putting a press release in the paper, probably sometime this week or early next week, because the plan in its entirety is now on our website and able to be reviewed by the public. So if you get a chance, it is on there, including all the town annexes. Yep. I think it took us about three or four hours to read everything of the entire plan. So again, take what you can, you know, specifically do your municipality, but if you have time, go over the entire county and read through that. So I believe it's gonna be available online until May first. I'm not entirely sure on that, but you're only gonna have about a month to review that. And once that gets reviewed, we submit it or we make the changes based on the public opinion. And then we submit it to the state first. So the state actually has to approve it first, and then the municipalities approve it. So it's kind of opposite. We want to make sure the state approves it first before we all do it. So that's it for the hazard mitigation plan.
If some infrastructure money comes into the county, is that kind of a basis?
It is. So there are a few funding sources. One is, I think it's called BRIC. And that's through Homeland Security. And by having those projects in your hazard mitigation plan and adopting the plan, it makes you eligible for that funding. So for instance, like I said before, the town of Smithville has a number of roads that have been severely damaged to storm events. And they are now eligible to get those funded and fixed because of that plan.
Any other questions on that? If that will move on to transportation?
We submitted our RFP for transportation. We have not received confirmation yet on that. So we're still kind of, I mean, we still obviously promote transportation in our office, and Steve's been working on the five-one-one New York rideshare kiosk, but as far as any kind of full-blown marketing initiatives, we're not, we haven't started that yet. So obviously, if you're gonna get a COVID vaccine, GetThere is offering rides for any COVID vaccine, if you need it. Same thing with employment, healthcare. Basically, if you have anybody that needs a ride to any of those things, they'll provide it.
Okay.
Airport, um, so we've had a lot of activity this past week, obviously, when it's seventy degrees and sunny and nice out, everybody wants to go flying. So it's been pretty good. We've sold a lot of fuel. We do have a few grant applications in right now that we haven't heard back about. One is the jet hangar. Another is our taxiway rehab design work. So we're basically redesigning the taxiway pavement, the lighting and signage. And that's part of the FAA entitlement programs, let it be paid. Actually, because of the stimulus money, that'll be a hundred percent paid for by the FAA this this time, which is nice. And I'm also writing an application to renovate the admin building. So a lot of applications going through. We also have an opportunity possibly this fall where a skydiving company may locate our airport. So if you want to go skydiving, it might go set you up this fall.
Help us out.
So it's the Climate Smart Communities slash Clean Energy Communities Program. I just shortened it up because I've been very long. So for the Climate Smart Communities Program, we've begun submitting documentation of actions that we've already done. And the process is that, once you complete that action and get the supporting documentation, you submit everything. And then you submit your whole application to the state, and then they review it all at once. So it's not like once one thing they submit it, so it's a full submission. So we've just been working on that and like planning ahead for some future actions that we'll take. And then for the Clean Energy Communities Program, we've had meetings with our coordinator, Terry Carroll, and representative from Solstice, a community solar company, and NEST, the Network for Sample Tomorrow. So we've been looking at community campaigns, specifically clean solar and clean heating and cooling campaign. And for the Clean Energy Communities Program, both of these campaigns will receive two hundred points for each. And they're considered action grants. So we, after you get twenty-five participants, sign up for each campaign, and the county is eligible for fifteen thousand dollars in grant money that we can use to support future projects in the county. And we'll be the representative from Solstice will be speaking to the planning committee on Thursday about a campaign for Shenango County.
Any questions for Colleen? But the virtual training.
So I know you guys are all excited. Our training is coming back this year. So on May twenty-seventh at four P M., we'll be doing a training, and it's gonna be all about Seeker. And basically, what they're doing is is they're taking a project and the entire training is walking through step by step that project. So, you know, if it could be building a house or a commercial building or whatever it may be, you're gonna start from literally getting the application and step by step designating it as a, you know, negative declaration, everything, all the way through. No, you have to get that on your own, cook your own dinner, but it will be virtual. I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to set up this room or not for those that don't have access, but probably not. But yeah, it does start at four P M. We'll be sending out an email with registration and all that stuff, so.
I've also been doing that boot camp program.
I think Colleen sent a thing back in, or December, January, it's the fourth Thursday of every month for an hour, and that's been very good. You can jump in at that anytime and catch up or whatever, so.
Is that through Department of State?
No, it's, it's not from Madison County, you got.
Great. We're on to Steve.
Let's see, what's going on? I'm working with a couple of engineers, maybe I said this before, on a solar panel array for the homeowner that actually will move to follow the sun, but also will stand vertical to get get the snow off from it. They're both mechanical, but one's mechanical, one's electrical engineering. I'm the guy who knows how to build stuff, and I've got two schools working on the project with me. Unadilla Valley is gonna cut the gear for the worm that will actually tip tip the solar panels. And Oxford has a waterjet cutter now, and they're gonna cut the they're gonna cut the gearbox panels. We hope to have this thing ready to enter in the seventy-six West competition and to give the schools credit for it. And I think that's kind of cool. Unadilla Valley, the Society of Manufacturing Engineers is still working at raising funds for their project. I told you last month that I had seventy-five grand from the Corning Foundation. It looks like Alogen may be, may be in for the other seventy-five. SME is following up on that right now. And I think that's a great project. I was on a conference call with Morrisville, McNe, Alogen, or not Alogen, I'm sorry, Shabani, Unison, and some other regional manufacturers a couple of weeks ago. There's really a huge need for training. Transportation's an issue, right? And one of the conversations we had was about taking like a training for what I call manufacturing boot camp. It's something that I did at the Morrisville campus here in Norwich. Two years ago, we did two cohorts of students, but actually holding that at the Unadilla Valley High School. I have been emailing back and forth with Morrisville staff. I and some of the professors would really like to see this established in late May so that we have a date for the classes in June, or I'm sorry, in July. We think that there's a real need for kids that are graduating from high school who aren't going on to college and who wake up sometime, you know, four weeks after graduation and go, what am I gonna do? Shabani, in my conversations with Valerie, we were talking about the boot camp, and she said, where are those people? I could use twenty of those people today. So what we're really, you know, the model I laid out yesterday in a in a letter to Jason Zebok and the Morrisville staff basically said, you know, let's run, let's let's schedule two boot camps, one in Norwich, one in New Berlin at U V in July, and let's follow that up with And let's follow that up with uh, a more intense program around mechatronics. It's a field that uh, we, we, we lack people. Almost every, every business around here right now is looking for somebody that does machine repair. You know, builds the flexors for robots, things like that. It's a, it's a real need. And Unison, right, their concern is that they're trying to run a formal apprenticeship program. Shabani would like to start an apprenticeship program. And we need a hundred and forty-five hours a year. Of classroom instruction to go with that in New York State. And we have a way to provide that. Um, what I will say is. Man, the SUNY schools, they're glacial in the pace at which they do things. It, it's, it's, it's stunning to me. You can have a project that actually makes them money. And you still struggle to get them to get it in motion. You know, so that's, I guess that's my commentary on that, you know, I'm, I'm still working with uh, groups out of Broom County, about a regional workforce development projects. Still working on some of the green energy stuff coming out of Broom County. And I really, the last thing I'd like to do, I really think I'll go back to entrepreneurship. I'm going to write a note today to the Upstate Institute at Colgate University. And see if they'd like to partner with me in writing a grant to the Shabani Foundation to pay for the Co-Starters training. And you know, maybe do a, a grassroots uh, two county project here around uh, building out the entrepreneurial. Ecosystem. I really think that's something we, we, we have to do. Um, you, you see it, I've, I've been on Co-Starting meetings and I see this going on throughout Appalachia. Down into the region, Mississippi Delta region, where these, these, this group is working and it, oh, it can revitalize the community. You know, can revitalize the community. And I do most of that with, you know, I like MBA and I like uh, I like Co-Starters for this. There's also a group out of um. Delaware County called Growth Wheel. And their model's alright, but the thing it doesn't do is it doesn't have that. Uh, that, that piece where you, you, you format collisions between people. Uh, you know, what I'm doing like with the engineers at, at uh, you know, that I'm working on the solar project with. You need people that have different sets of skills, right? My skill is I know how to build stuff. Those guys know how to design stuff. And you know, the next piece is we gotta find somebody who knows how to market stuff. But you know, you need, you need people to have those kinds of collisions that, that, where those conversations happen. Glad to take on other projects. Somebody hands me something that, you know, I'll, I'll do it if you want. If you have something else you'd like me to look at.
Steve, you know, historically, that related instruction you're talking about within apprenticeships, a lot of times out in the rural areas has been done. Well, I don't know if they still call them, but through correspondent schools, basically, they're done, done remotely. That's still an option.
Well, right, I would use uh, the Society of Manufacturing Engineers Tooling U program. That, that's online. The thing that we have found with that is that the hands-on. Use of the tools, the hands-on troubleshooting uh, really is powerful. And by partnering with Morrisville, I, I, what we would do is we'd probably use for a hundred and forty-five hours. My proposal is we do, do thirty hours of thirty tooling you modules. And the New York State Apprenticeship Program recognizes each one of those as being one point five hours of instruction. So that would get me to forty-five hours. And then what I would add on to that is two hours of hands-on. To follow each module. I have the tools to do that. We have all these amateur kits that Morrisville has. Um, that would get me to a hundred and five hours. And then what I really think would really enhance this because, right, if the need is mechatronics. I would like to add another thirty-five hours on the actual Morrisville campus on a, on maybe a Friday afternoon. Where for, once, once a month or seven months, we did five hours of hands-on. Because they have things like um. Uh, they've got a great big hydraulic lab, right? Where they've got uh, gear pumps sectioned, um, they've got uh, big servo systems, hydraulic servo systems and things. And again, we can take those apart, we can rebuild them. You know, there'd be a piece of this around machining and fabrication. A lot of what mechatronics. Right now, some of the focus of people who work in that field is on building the rippers and the flexors on robots. I mean, you, you, you can't believe how many robots are in, in Shingel County at this point. The dog food factory has, I think, seven of them. Right? And you're constantly building, you're, you're constantly modifying those to handle different products and things. So I've got to put a little bit of machining in there. You know, which a, a, at least at Unadilla Valley, I've got a CNC mill and a CNC lathe where I could keep some of that there. But the other piece we'd like to do, right, is we, if we get students right out of high school interested in this. We'd like to use it as a springboard to get them to consider uh, continuing education on the main Morrisville campus and in the engineering fields. You know, there, there's a lot of, in my world, right? And I'm not, I can't run this because I need partners. Morrisville has to be one of my partners. But you know, I, I see this as a much bigger picture kind of thing. Hopefully it would be. Good Lord, I, I did this project for Bosse's last month. First I did jobs from A to Z in Shingel County. I could cover every single letter of the alphabet where there was an open job. Except for Z, and that was a Zamboni operator. And there was actually an opening for a Zamboni driver at Colgate University. So I thought that was close enough, right? We're at least, we're at least six miles from our border. You know, entry level jobs, I picked up over a hundred of those. You know, jobs that somebody just out of high school could take. But what was, you know, even more interesting to me was getting into these. Uh, higher level jobs that require, you know, maybe a two-year or a four-year degree, but a lot of them are two-year degrees, you know, the electrical techs. Half a dozen jobs for electrical technicians uh, in the region. Four or five of those, four of those were at Raymond, uh, right? And they take fifty-five thousand dollars a year. You know, not a bad, not a bad living for somebody that, that has no college. Or has two years of college. You know, these, these technician jobs like I'm talking about, right? There's an opening, there, there are two openings at Shabani, there's an opening at Alogen, there's an opening at Cary. There are twenty openings at Raymond because that kind of skill set, you can work in assembly, you can repair machinery, you can do any of that kind of work. You know, Blake, Blake Sullivan at Unison considers that the most critical thing to keeping that plant operating in our region. Uh, you know, is having people that can, can keep the machinery up and running. Uh, right now, they, they bring in techs from outside to service it. And that means they, they have something break down, they wait three days or four days to get the, the tech scheduled in here, right? And, and that, that shuts down their production on, on, on lines. And then you, you, you can understand how that's, that's devastating to a company like that, especially when we live in this world of just in time delivery. So, you know, I continue to work on this. I, I, I really wish SUNY would, would move faster. But man, it's like pulling teeth sometimes. And they get all the, you know, they got all the pushback from, from the main. From Albany that says, you know, their, their professors can't travel more than uh, twelve miles from the campus right now. So to bring a professor down to teach at Unadilla Valley, I can't do that. You know, it just um. You know, hopefully this thing breaks loose over the summer and we can, we can really get, get some of this stuff in, in motion. There's real demand. There is real demand for this stuff.
Any other questions for Steve? Want to put which of the four?
Actually, we've got three vacancies.
Everything we possibly can. Um, George has talked to all the supervisors because obviously one of the vacancies is a supervisor vacancy. Um, and no one has been on that at all. And the other two, we've, we've published posts on Facebook, LinkedIn, it's been in the evening sun. We just can't find anybody.
Are you canvassing the town, any words?
We, everything. Oh, we've had a few people that have been potentially interested. We invite them to a meeting, give them the link and then nothing happens, so.
Steve, anything else you'd like to share?
I think I've covered it.
And Mike?
There, we had a variance hearing for the Friends of Museum District for uh, two projects along Rexford Street. Uh, one being the sign project. Uh, the variances were approved for four sign, or four signs along Rexford Street. Two signs at either end of the district being gateway signs identifying the museum district in Norwich and then. The two signs more internal to the uh, district would be wayfinding, um, highlighting um. You know, the museums um, and nonprofit organizations along this uh, Rexford Street Boulevard area. The project is moving forward with a streetscape design, hoping for a uh, late summer, fall uh, installation completion. Mostly aesthetic improvements. Uh, we're currently seeking funding and other things for that, but um, I think we're gonna move forward with the design here shortly. Um, the second variance that was approved here was in support of the um, classic car museum is proposing a parking lot. Their spring construction start will. I think begin Monday. Uh, they're gonna be developing a twenty-six car parking lot. With um, also some electrical service connections for food trucks and other things like that. Lighting, landscaping, um, all that kind of stuff over there, but they got a reduction. In their uh, fence height along the um, would be the eastern edge of the property to, to be more of a guardrail than a, than a fence, so. Things happening in the museum district, just thought I would uh, update you on that. Um, Shane is uh, part of that group as well as Kerry. So a lot of good stuff happening there in the city of Norwich.
Mike, I did, I did submit that grant application yesterday as well.
Good, good, you know, um, I, maybe you can fill people in on that. Um, sorry, I wasn't more involved in that, in that process, so.
There's a A A R P has a grant application called the Community Challenge every year. And so we applied for the museum district for fifty thousand dollars. We'll find out sometime in June, July period if we receive that grant.
Thanks.
We have Paul with us too. Paul, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm all set, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Guess we're done with this part of the meeting?
Yep.
Can we, can we do two thirty-nine?
We can.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Me just pull up some stuff where I can. You're being a little picky here.
We can do whatever you pull up.
I'm just trying to get them to download. Oh, Davis. Alright, let's see what we got. Alright, let's start there.
Okay, I went to the bathroom.
I'm trying to find it.
Maybe separate. Alright, so this one is uh, the twenty-one dash twelve, Adam Evans, Wells Road subdivision. Eighty-two acres on one side of the, the Wells Road, which is in the town of Orange. We, there you go. No, this is the one, go back to the point you just had.
It's all black.
The black one, it's with an arrow.
Gotta find it again.
So anyhow, he, he owns both sides of the road and selling the west side of the road. Uh, there's a pond on it and. The owner back there, the owner wants to use it for hunting and possibly build a little cabin on it. And we've heard that before, but I think this is more or less legit. Um, I notified the city because it's possibly in the city watershed. Uh, I've never heard back from them and. The town doesn't really have any concerns with this one. Any question?
Make a motion, fix it.
I'll second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, this one is on the corner of the Wells Road and Route twenty-three. Can you make it a little bit bigger? Trying. Alright, so parcel D, which is up in upper right-hand corner now. Upper right-hand corner.
No, this is D. D is down here in the right.
Alright, what's one of the, the skinny one up there?
Top here?
Yeah.
This is E.
E, okay. Uh, parcel D, E, we approved last month. And this has been a very piecemeal situation and we're really frustrated with that. The one below it that's not labeled is actually the house and farm set. The one that's on the corner of the Wells Road and Route twenty-three. Supposedly they're gonna sell to the people that own the home set, so that would be joining those two. Uh, the other issue we have is um. Proposal B. Which is the second one from the lot, right there. Everybody's familiar with the Wells Road, it's a, off twenty-three, it's a seatbelt down and a seatbelt back up. Uh, there's a big culver at the bottom of it and that lot is unbuildable. And our subdivision regulations, we have a statement that it's last year's buildable. We can't even. Get a driveway and, and what he has labeled there, so that's gonna be a redo. I'm gonna meet for, actually, the owner lives in South Carolina now and we're doing a phone call sometime before noon today and try to work some of this out, so um. As far as county concerns, um, that's what we have to look at today and I don't know if there. Anybody has any or? Uh, did you hear back from Joki on that one, Colleen?
Yeah, um.
I'm sure they got something to say on the.
It was the theme, when like, they had their, when it first. Evan's property like first thing they had to say is that.
The driveway and all, yeah, this is the standard, standard Joki stuff. Okay, right, okay.
When you say unbuildable, is it unbuildable because of the stream and the topography or is it just uh?
That's, that's, well, what they have, uh, whatever they have there for road traffic, basically uh, covers the ravine.
Yep.
And, and a big, probably twelve foot dian or culver in the center of it. Uh, so, I mean, you couldn't even put a driveway there. I mean, you know, you could say, well, I'm gonna sell it for somebody for a hunting camp or whatever, down in the back, but. There's no place to even get off the road there.
Yeah. So, so when you, when your regulation dictates what's buildable and what's not, is that just based on? You know?
Topography.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like there's a stream there. Obviously something feeds that culver. I mean, that's probably a D C water body. It has setbacks, not that, you know, single family regulation really follows that closely, it's just.
That's also, so the, the screen that's on the right. Um, and that actually, they join, you know, off the site or whatever, but that, that goes through the city reservoir.
Yep.
So, uh, that, you know, it's all in the water.
Make them extend the property line up to get kind of a flatter area for access then or what?
The other option is the skinny lot we already approved, he told me he was gonna join that with um, something else.
Yeah, okay.
So he could, he could take the one we approved last month, hook that on to the big lot and then you'd have access off twenty-three. That's what I'm gonna encourage that and make that kind of a, a flag lot. In the last year. Well, this is the problem, it's on piecemeal, for the last, I.
To say five years, they've had three, three?
Three, yeah. He's been selling this off, piecemeal going up the Wells Road. He owns multiple properties. But then the other project, we did a solar project, different family. So there's, I mean, there's four or five Evanses that are all in this, they're all on land in that part of the town of Orange, so. This is, this one of them. So if there's any, no county concern, we'll have a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Just the.
New Berlin.
New Berlin?
Trying to find it. Yes.
Okay, that's, yeah, bring the map down.
I'm trying to bring up the, where it said about it.
Okay, I got, well, I can. I got a quote out of that.
Okay.
Right, so the Berlin group is twenty-four points three nine six acres out of a hundred and ninety-three acres. And that includes the right-of-way along to the existing drive. That was the notes I quoted off on the application.
Basically, it looks like a satellite dish with like a little beam coming out of it. It's like this area here plus this house.
Right.
And this right-of-way.
Right, and that right-of-way, which goes back to a driveway to access off from, that's County Road, what, twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay.
So is that, the easement over the driveway stops? Is there another easement that's currently in play right there already, or?
So the right-of-way is, is like the bottom there before, before it starts to properly line.
Yeah, I just want to see that one note that.
Right, yeah.
Okay, there already is. Oh, okay. So it says it's a proposed right-of-way for, okay, gotcha.
But I have no idea what the New Berlin group is or what that is. Or change things to something like that.
Well, it looks like it's a funny-looking shape.
Yeah, it's like, it's like a cell tower cycle.
Yeah, I mean.
The property roughly, on the square.
This is the property that Dr. Seporia used to own.
Oh, on the, on the top of the hill past the farm.
Right.
Oh, okay, so he built a house up there.
It's about three hundred by three fifty.
Okay. All right.
Little enlargement show, gravel, story, wood frame house, beach field.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a farm down on, on Kings Island Road, and then, that he owned. But then this got separated off apparently, and that's just outside by the hill, he's selling. The only real county concern would be anything on Kings Island Road, I guess.
It really doesn't even affect that.
No, it doesn't affect, I mean, and the rest of it, yeah, okay.
This is the second time that this has been proposed for a subdivision.
Okay. But that should be a town concern, not a county concern, I would have to say. So that being said, a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay?
I'll second.
All favor?
Yeah, I'm trying to get my.
Okay.
I don't have a map for this one.
There you go. It's a separate, it's a separate attachment.
Oh, I don't have it on here.
Okay, well, it's twenty-one point five acres to be combined with. A piece of the Bailey lumber, which is a, so, this T M P David, twenty-one and a half, and combining it with. Yes, that's what it said in the application. That's kind of what it says right there, right?
So it's some of the existing parcel.
Okay, all right. It is an under-year flood zone. There is a note on, on the map for that, but I don't. That whole Bailey lumber is a, under-year flood zone. So they only. I guess it's designed Route eighty?
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be our concern, so. Better go, did that go to D O T? Okay, there, 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 yeah, okay. Any questions? Motion to approve? Yeah, kind of D O T. Second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Green.
Green, oh, okay. So, I forgot, but I guess we must have approved this electric office on County Road, or this warehouse at some point on thirty-two?
Must be it.
Yeah, so, so that's L, A L U T Electric Company is, has a hundred by forty warehouse. I counted about thirty-two, and I'm not sure if it's north or south of the Village of Green. That's nearly completed, but they want to add a forty-three by fifty office addition to it. Thank you, the green. I have no idea.
We talked, we must be, we talked to Luanne Day yesterday.
Okay.
Cause I wasn't sure what they were doing with us. It was like an electrical office, like someone's coming in and buying stuff.
Right, yeah.
But it's just basically a contractor shop for storage and nobody's gonna be coming in and out for a sec.
Okay, all right. Okay, I guess a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I don't have Guilfords on here.
Okay, so, okay, the one, the first one is the, is the, the back hole, or however it's that.
Right, right. Yeah, both of these are simple subdivisions, the back told. This is on Junction Road, Town Road, Town and Guilford. Basically, they're breaking off. Five acres from a parcel, which is gonna be added to an adjoining parcel, so they assume. And the motivation for doing it is the parcel that where it's being added, as I said, only a right-of-way, they didn't have frontage. On Junction Road, so now they will. So, that's basically it.
Any question? Motion to approve? Second?
I'll second.
Bob is saying.
Yeah, I'm staying, right? Yeah, the Ives subdivision. Application is also simple. This is a case where. The mother, Dawn Ives, owns the property at this point, and she wants to make provision for her son. To have a portion of the property, so. They're subdividing that portion where the mother's living is being broken off. It's about ten acres. And they have a deed of right-of-way, which we like to get access to the rest of the property that the, the son belonged. So, it's an old farm, essentially, that's been subdivided.
This is on County Route thirty-eight.
Yep, 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 sorry, yep.
Any questions or concerns? We have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
We get them all? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Cole.
I thought that was one we already did. Oh.
Oh.
Okay. Okay, we got Cole.
Thought I clicked on that one.
Okay, all right. So this is in Savannah. It's a subdivision, twenty-seven point four eight three acres out of a total parcel of two hundred and twenty-two acres.
Oh, yeah, um.
So kind of that triangle piece out of, I have a big piece. As I said, twenty thousand acres out of two hundred and twenty-two acres. Yeah, right.
So it's, it's just the crosshash area in the bottom right-hand corner out of the bigger.
That's correct.
Land hook, okay. God, is, that's a public, is that a public right-of-way through there then?
Uh, yeah, it's Con, it's Bisbee Road and Con, Corn Cross Road.
So, so on the larger map, are there, are there property lines shown across them?
The larger map just shows the subdivision piece.
Okay.
The other, the law, the, the smaller one is just a location map off the.
Oh, it's just an ease right-of-way, okay, I got you, all right. Is that, um. What do they call those when they're? There's like a perceived right-of-way there. Goes to the center line of the road though, right?
Right-of-way by usage.
Yeah. So is that, is that allowed to be a, a frontage-type right-of-way, you know? I'm assuming it is, subdivision law, right?
Yeah, it's basically a land hook. We have parcels like that all across the county where they're crossing a road, basically, and they, it's the same parcel number.
Oh, no, I mean the one that, you know, where the center line goes to the, to the center, or your property goes to the center line of the right-of-way. You know, I think Steve mentioned it.
Depends on the property, because some of them do go to the center line, other ones don't. It really just depends on the right-of-way when they were signed.
Okay. But there's no issue with having that type of right-of-way and a new subdivision off of it? You don't need to, you don't need to go and then dedicate. Actually show the bounds along the edge of that right-of-way, okay?
No, I think it's kind of one of those perceived things.
Yeah, I just didn't know if like, you know, we're going through and suggesting the correction of those as, as new subdivisions, you know? Like you would show and demarcate a width of a right-of-way through there, you know?
Right. I don't know.
I, I, you know, I take no exception to it, but I'm just asking that question.
You probably should ask an engineer.
I think you need to ask a land surveyor.
We got into that, Mike, back with the gas drilling stuff, you know, whether. Like, who got in, who was in the spacing unit?
Yeah.
Ten A, which was once a state highway, all the way from Norwich to Preston. That, that, the, that, the county actually owns the land underneath the roadway. And I believe thirty foot each side from the center line.
Okay, yeah.
And then you get to like Preston Center Road or my road, and it's by right-of-usage of the town roadway is there, so I own. I have, I own the mineral rights below the, below the roadway.
Yep, yeah, I, I actually saw it more recently, the Historical Society in Rexford Street, the surveyor was showing. Their property going out into the center of Rexford Street, and I'm thinking to myself, probably the same case, I guess.
Right, yep.
All right, yeah, no, I don't think there's any issue with that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Now we're done.
Sorry to drag it out, I just, I don't see you guys that often, so.